For the May Franklin Township Planning Board meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could see the flag so big.
I was blocking. Took my helmet. Recognize that.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following from the St. Louis Township website, posted on the bulletin board within the municipal building, printed in South Jersey Times and The Sentinel.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Doyle? Mr. Kelly? Mr. Malady?
Here.
Mr. Swade?
Here.
Mr. Ranson? Mr. Cahoo? Mayor Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Travolion?
Here.
And Chairman Hahn.
All right, first on tonight's agenda is a resolution for PB 24-10, Scott Skazinski, minor subdivision on Stanton Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve PB 24-10.
Chris, roll call.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Swade?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Travolion?
Yes. All right, first on tonight's agenda is PB 25-1, Patriot Homes Minor Subdivision on Brand Avenue.
Dear Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, members of the board, my name is Dale Taylor. I'm a licensed attorney at the State of New Jersey Department of Energy, New Jersey. I represent the African Patriot Homes of the state. As the Chair of the College of State Minor Subdivision, it's owned variance, it's one variance, it's allowed for the minimus variance. The meat of the new lots, they require 150 feet width. For lot 1601, this lot, block 47, is 147.90 feet. For 16, 147.89, it's a little less than two inches.
Mr. Taylor, have you ever appeared in front of Franklin Township Planning Board before?
They've not.
Okay, do we need to swear amen or no?
Attorneys aren't sworn.
Oh, okay. My bad. Yeah, they should.
They get to say whatever they want. And their clients go to jail.
I'm the chairman of the Gloucester County Board, so they should swear in some meetings. So I teach at some other town. Attorneys don't get sworn in, they get sworn out.
Yeah.
So that's what it is. There, now we had a, basically, there's no pavement anywhere along this road. And so then, we were saying, we're trying to request that we put it up.
Sidewalk?
Sidewalk, yeah. Because it'd be the sidewalk to nowhere, and that can be a safety problem. People get on the sidewalk, perhaps somebody get off and then get back out of the road. And that's basically, that's basically it. My clients are well-known, they go wonderful houses. My clients are pretty successful, they have a good property here. And I think it would be a good benefit to the municipality. And I know you have another application, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. So do you want to go to your review letter, I see you're the planner?
Yes, I'm the board planner.
Okay. So we did get his letter of April 21st. He indicated, what I just indicated on that two things, we got the master plan. Now, if we clarify whether the building footprint shown on the subject of the construction norms. And that's correct. Basically have, sorry, basically have the layout where the houses are, and we access Egress for the driveway, which is the way it's on there now. And then, footprints, what means we're requiring something else, and we will submit any outstanding documents.
Chris, engineering report?
Sure. They've already agreed to all the engineering comments, which we're just asking for clarification and a little bit of additional documents on the subdivision, draft D documents, three coordinate values, and verification of the wetlands delineation and potential flood hazard delineation. That, as long as they provide that eventually, absolutely no problems there. Planning part, this is two variances, both of them for insufficient lot frontage of 150 feet. They're a little, just under, they're just over two feet in width on each one, but otherwise, I think each lot, the area here, 6.09 and 6.71 acres. So they're very narrow but very deep lots. There's no buildability issues here in terms of either property having a problem with the lack of frontage making them unbuildable or causing any detriment to the neighbors, in my opinion. I will ask a few additional questions, since we have the chair of the Gloucester County Land Use Law of the Bar Association. Now, in cases where there's an insufficient lot area or lot frontage, it is an appropriate question to ask whether there have been attempts to acquire additional land. Have you tried to purchase a foot on either side from any of the neighbors?
No, we didn't, because it was so de minimis that we'd rather answer the variance.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I figure I'd ask the question anyway, since we got...
Is that in your ordinance and that is something else?
It's not in the ordinance, no.
Okay, if some of them required, it's actually do that. Of course, it's more than I think a horrible thing to put in there.
I agree, I wouldn't want to see that in the ordinance. There is case law that suggests it's an appropriate question to ask, but I don't think it should be an absolute requirement that you have to inquire with your neighbors whether you can buy two feet of land from them.
Yeah, I thought that that was more for, I thought that...
Under-sized lots, yes.
...more for density, the frontage, where you actually weigh.
It's anything involving either insufficient area or insufficient frontage.
You know, I'm short, if there's an acre required, and I have three quarters of an acre, can I buy a quarter acre off of it about here? But with only a foot, I would think that that would be...
I agree, this is de minimis. The actual, the case behind it's an interesting one. It's from Lacey Township of a bunch of paper lots, where they had newspaper lots that were all, you know, like 2,000 square feet, and the zoning there required a minimum like an acre and a half. And in the minutes from the actual zoning board hearing, the two neighbors are arguing with each other over trying to sell each other the properties, so that one can get a buildable lot, and they never come to a conclusion. So nobody got to build anything there, and it's still vacant to this day, and that case is from the 70s.
Wow.
Anyway, interesting stuff, but these are diminishment exceptions, I see no problem with.
If you leave, let's say, two or five feet, and you ask your neighbor...
It's a ratio, two and five.
And your neighbor will say, yeah, I'll give you two or five feet, I want 100,000 dollars.
Thirty-five feet for the building.
And so, you know, then you gotta say, well, that's unreasonable, and it gets, it's a sticky rule, so.
Mr. Taylor, I had a question, I don't know if you can answer it, it's probably more appropriate for your client, but was this lot not subject to a subdivision approval in very recent history?
The property next to it was. That, my property had a, the first one was from the town. Yeah.
Yeah, just state your name and address.
Mike Miller, 119 Peach Street Drive.
Raise your right hand, we can square what you have to give, we'll be through all of your questions.
Yes. So this lot, yes, was subdivision of, used to be a town property, got bought at the same auction that I bought my property. We did a line delineation change. So she only had 100 foot frontage here, and I shifted this line this way to give her 150 feet here, which, at the time, I was gonna build, left this at 295. Since then, I bought a property on Stanton that I'm building on, that's just that resolution tonight, which let this one buy too short, and I buy two to have it too short. But yes, this property here is the one we just saw, not this.
So this variance you're asking for tonight was essentially created by the prior subdivision? Right, but that also left the neighboring lot more conforming than it was previously, so ultimately, at the end of the day, we're in better shape, right?
It affects the whole property.
Yeah, thank you.
Question, Mr. Miller, the property to the east, does it have an existing home?
Yes.
And your plans with that?
He doesn't own the property.
This property here, I don't...
There is no homes on the property currently?
No.
Okay, all right.
There's never been any, the township hasn't been for however long.
Okay.
Other than that, I've got nothing else to report here. Minimum lot frontage variances for both, for otherwise conforming lots that have more than sufficient space to support a single-family home and whatever septic systems they need on each lot.
Okay.
The variances, in my opinion, are de minimis. It's less than 2% of the requirement for each one.
The, Chris, the DEP approvals that you referenced in your review letter, am I correct, they've already been received?
That's my understanding.
And approved?
What was Ed's comment here?
I thought I saw, I'm on the environment, I thought I saw the approval come through.
All notifications to the neighbors were made for the variances? Okay. Okay.
Make a motion to open to the public, thank you.
Yes, motion to open to public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I opened, I was calling for a second, sorry. Just wait a second.
Anyone from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to close open public portion?
Yeah, motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I guess that's it, any comments from the board?
No, I think it's a very minor, they, all the locations will prove, applying 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, to anything that we, we do approve each year, by the way, each year. Any other variances that may, that frontage, which was, is de minimis.
Is there a second on this motion?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Swade?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Travolion?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much. My hope was just to say, you know, I think the last time I was here was in a matter of going to a new bachelor party. We did some changes to these front of our... I just wanted...
This is the parking lot.
I would be interested if I didn't say, you have a wonderful secretary here.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Brandt, your white Russian, you might owe him a raise, but, you really, really have a great person here. And I've been a lot of places for 25 years in this practice, and you can't say that, but she's wonderful.
You should have said this before your application, we would have approved you in half the time.
Yeah, I don't know. They would say, oh, you suck it up, right? No, but I'm serious about it, she's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, second on tonight's agenda is SP 25-3, Sahara Sands, Coles Mill Road, Final Site Plan Application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Briefly introduce myself, my name is Peter Chaney. I am an attorney at the law firm of Hyatt and Bridge Pyro. And my office represents the African Sahara Sands, doing business at Sahara Sands and Franklin Incorporated. I want to take this time very briefly to compliment your very fantastic board secretary.
You're gonna be your question tomorrow. You're gonna want a raise tomorrow.
Good month's worth. This relates to the property located at block 6, 1, 03, lots 1, 2, 9, 10, and 11. This is essentially a preliminary final major site plan application relative to an active mining site.
We've got it at 6103.
Actually exists over Franklin Township and Monroe Township. It's, technically, the application is again for preliminary final major site.
I forgot what was I supposed to...
This is essentially a mining for renewal application, because right now, we're dealing with a limited use.
Okay, maybe 3 was down here, I'm copying one.
And in fact, there is actually no expansion or changes to the site whatsoever. So again, essentially, this is looking for renewal of our mining.
Peter, I have to stop you for a quick second, can you please state your blocks and lots, in Franklin only?
Oh, I thought I did, I'm sorry.
You did, but there may be a discrepancy.
Yeah, because the application...
You said one to, we have one, three.
I had one lots, block 6, 1, 03, lots 1, 2, 9, 10.
And that's what the application says.
Our paperwork says lot 3, not lot 2.
Yeah, I could, there could be a typo, I also seem to remember...
So it's a typo, it is indeed lot 2?
Yeah, I took, I took from the engineer.
I seem to remember the application from four or five years ago, the last time you renewed, there was also, you had expanded to add one property, I think that was lot 3, but it might very well be that it was lot 2. Either way, as long as we verify that eventually.
And I would, and I could just say that Mr. Jacobs, who was actually the engineer from five years ago, he said it's not, so I clarified a little bit that again.
But, either way, you're not expanding the operation, it's just a matter of verifying the numbers on the tax max.
Yeah, we're not, nothing is being expanded, the use is not expanding any, and again, essentially, they...
Sorry for the interruption, please continue.
No problem, we'd rather clarify and clear for record. And the other thing I did want to mention prior to bringing up Mr. Jacobs, I'm sorry, engineer, is just a quick, as I'm sure you know, this does cross over to two separate chapters, Monroe and Franklin. Monroe is exclusively where the active extraction is taking place. No extraction is taking place in Franklin on this site. That is, what happens on Franklin is more related to processing, which is something that the application presented, we've also here as well as for James, that it testified to, before they were in Franklin. But beyond that, I think the only other thing that I consider useful is actually access, access to the building. So again, just very quickly, there's no variance between this, and we're looking hopefully for a, relatively quickly, see the application expect, without further ado, I'll bring up our engineer, Mr. Jacobs. He was sworn in, and we're looking over for that.
Yes, will you swear, man?
Yes, will you swear the testimony you're about to give tonight will be the proof of all cases, nothing but...
Yes, I do. Bruce Jacobs, okay. Bruce Jacobs, the front of that consulting group, professional engineer, planner, and designer. And I was here five years ago.
Mr. Jacobs, it's been some time, will you just briefly go over your credentials?
And we're... Yeah, I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner. I've been from the back consulting group for probably, I think, eight years. I'm a planning board engineer in Lacey Township. I've been doing competitions, mining and other, and site times and subdivisions for a very long time. And you've been all over.
And your license is hold for as an engineering and planning, same point, are you standing for state?
Yes, they are.
With that, we would submit him as an expert in fields of professional engineering and planning, unless of course the board has...
We accept.
Thank you. All right, as you, that's been briefly stated, the property's located on the north side of Coles Mill Road and the east side of Woodall Road. Coles Mill Road, Woodall Road, and, for a straight, I'm gonna mention it, Mike, and you'd be just very grateful for the record, Scott, what this is, what you're describing when you say this.
Okay, this is a 256 acre parcel. Not specifically what you're referencing. Woodall Road, exactly. Was this near, is it near the 5th, I believe, yes, it was. And to clarify, it is lot 2, not option.
Okay.
It's part of Franklin Township. It's been stated before, ingress, egress is from Coles Mill Road. Trucks come into the site, load, and weigh, and exit the site on Coles Mill Road, which is the town road. All the processing is done in Franklin Township, in this, in that section of the mining site. The extraction is occurring from the Easterway section of the site, which is in Monroe, which is where all the mining has been going on for five years here.
And we're starting quickly, while they're not actively mined, there are some reserves spent down in Franklin.
Yeah, there's some reserves, but don't know if they're busy to mine, or they're... I haven't been, definitely discussed the engineer comments. We would be seeking waivers, like we did once before, from the engineer comments on the southern edge, which is one site time being drawn, so as much as we have lived. In fact, we're having a small scale, this is in a detailed site time, we're trying out for Mr. Jacobs. So those are some considerations, so this is an appropriate scale for the development of the site. We discussed traffic movements, they're in the ring from Coles Mill Road, and load up, and then exit out. I believe all the maintenance, maintenance and restoration guarantees are imposed with the account. I would ask for a waiver for locating the authorities, there are private facilities on the site that extend into where the equipment is, that they load and unload, warehouse, etc. That's where the authorities are. And is that kind of planning board approval? Again, the only reason we're here is for, to do the mining operation. And I believe all the other agencies that can receive will... To the extent that they have, if we would please...
So you're not holding a Pine Land Certificate of filing, yet?
I do not believe, actually, let's bring up Mr. James Brad, he's a representative of the African, that testified as to that. James Brad? Okay, before you answer that question, brief introduction, to discuss your goal, your application.
Thank you, I was, for James Brad, I know they're also, the social materials, relatively new, they've been here for a year and a half now. But, I've been very familiar with the site, I need a...
So we haven't received a certificate of mining as of yet, or...
No, we have not, so we knew that, of course, we've been applying to the committee for eight months now.
Sorry.
Well, we anticipate receiving a certificate of mining.
We do, we sent our latest revisions in a month and a half ago, and we expect it to be...
An additional outside source of approval, New Jersey DEP, water allocation permit. I saw something that you did not state you had one, did you apply for one? Do you, water allocation permit?
We have all of our permits listed.
Okay.
We have all the...
But it wasn't included in your packet, I don't think.
If it was not, we'd certainly forward that permit.
I don't know if our engineer needs to see it.
If you have it, we'd like to see it. I think what we had was a little dated, I forgot the exact date, I don't have the whole...
They expire every five years, if I'm correct. So if it's after five years, we need to see the new date of expiration.
And again, if any standard has expired, we would certainly create a condition to prove, take care.
I just had a quick question, not, it's kind of somewhat unrelated to the application, but what's the timeframe, and I know that's based on, you know, economic conditions, but theoretically, how much longer will that site be mined for, before it's reclaimed, do you know?
We have, are asking it's anywhere from five to 10 years.
Okay.
On how fast we can go, barely fast. Just polarized, so it's a wide range, but five to 10 years.
Yeah, but, I mean, assuming you don't acquire any additional property, it's really not that long of a time, so the township, you could see that reclaimed, you know, in the near future, well, I mean, 10 years, maybe not the near future, but essentially, the Franklin Township side, you're saying, may have some additional resources left, but it's primarily already been mined, so...
Primarily done, it's some left, no look, but it'll be, but there's more stuff to account for.
Okay, thank you.
That's it on your presentation?
Yes, of course, we reserve the right to respond any moment, I'm going to just request a team of order and question.
Okay, we'll go to engineering report, Chris.
Okay, great. Yeah, there's not much to say here, this is, I guess they'll be back every five years, unless they're done in five years, and they don't want to renew their permit, but your code 253-82C for resource extraction has a list of submission requirements, so there's really no other specific requirements in terms of performance measures that they have to meet. It's almost as if this is just a check-in with the board to allow you to ask questions, to get an update on the operations, and know what's going on, and make sure that they're renewing all their state permits. It's not, not something that they, that there's a, I guess, there's really no performance measures in your code, is the best way I can put that, so it's really, the checklist of providing all the documentation, most of it they've provided, and they say they're gonna provide the rest, and it's just checking off that they're getting all their state permits, and verifying that they get approval from neighboring town, which is Monroe. I guess Monroe is a little bit different system, I'm the planning board planner in Monroe, they didn't have to go to Monroe's planning board, they got some sort of administrative approval there. But, anyway, the one area I do need to point out that they do not need to provide, although you can try and provide it if you want, but I'll tell you, good luck, is getting an approval from the Township Architectural and Landscape Advisory Board. My understanding is they have not met in 10 to 15 years, if there is one, and if anybody in town is actually on that board, they don't realize it, so I think we can scratch that one off the list.
Thank you, Chris.
That was actually the one I was not recalling in my head, so I'm actually very glad to hear. I was struggling.
So is there a motion now to go into open public?
I make a motion, open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want Craig 4448, Coles Mill Road?
Is that microphone working in the back? It's not even working.
It's on. Unless she shut it off.
She may have, it was working.
Yes.
Nora?
She just kind of got home.
Here are my neighbors, I came basically just in case anybody else was gonna come and give them grief, because 25 years, it would take 30 years. They've been outstanding neighbors, they do, they sweep the streets three times a week, streetkeepers going up and down, there are men that work in the pit. There's been a few times I've gone over there because I'm stuck, and I don't have the muscle. They'll come over at lunch and help, they help other neighbors on either side of us. They're good neighbors to have, the trucks are as well as empty, expected for truck drivers, but the pit boys are very strict. If somebody gives you a hard time, that truck is gone. And we've had some, over the years, you know, seeing how, just a thing in the driveway, and other stuff like that, but there's, they do the best they can with the trucks. Now, Donna, herstcraft, who was on Bluebuck, she called me about it, and she has a complaint about trucks that are cutting the corner, going from Coles Mill to Malaga, which they are not supposed to do, which I happen to say they're not supposed to do, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, so that maybe you could talk to the police, because, you know, that little stretch of street, you know, half of it's Monroe, half of it's Franklin, and I don't think anybody pays much attention to it either, either township. But, you know, Donna lives there, you know, all by herself, at the very end of the township line, and she's feeling relatively neglected, so if somebody could do something to, you know, mind the truck, maybe the two police chiefs, Monroe and Franklin, could get together and sneak up and...
Post it, post it, right?
Pardon?
You're talking about, is it a full ton road?
Yeah, it's, to my knowledge, the little piece that goes between Coles Mill and Malaga is restricted to the double trucks, they're supposed to go up Malaga.
It's got a full ton, you're like that.
Yeah, I don't really, yeah. So that's the only problem, anybody has related to they, is about the trucks, and of course, the pit boys can't do anything about that, they can't even see it. Other than that, they're gonna, all right, one question for them. Franklin's, I, you said there's still some materials left to the driver box, is there any plan to mine that road? I mean, so where is it?
At the moment, there's not. I guess, there's not a ton of reserves left, and they're hardly to get places for a barge, or dredge. So, no. Yeah, so a lot of that, a lot of that is mine.
It's all mine, I'm sure.
So I'm saying...
And this is, you can't go there.
So...
And there's, there's no expectation of you being able to apply this, actually just play it off?
That is not an expectation of ours.
Well, the reason I'd ask is that if you are done mining here, I was wondering whether or not you could do the back remediation. If you're done mining, yeah, I know, I have a plan. You can't. These are really tall cliffs and they present a danger, particularly with the stupid kids that can come in and stick in the pit. You know, and granted, they're not supposed to be the wall, but if they threw that in, it's just, it was fine to explode on the edge of these pits. They'd walls, they'd collapse, they'd go down in them. And we pulled kids out of pit one, there were like six or seven of them. And one of them couldn't even swim and they were swimming across with somebody else grabbing it. And they wound up in the mud pit, you know, when the overflow comes out and pull them out the road. You know, I'm just thinking, if you are done mining the wall there, you could do the back remediation, you know, and turn it down to get rid of the wall.
So if we're not required to, I don't, we would ask that we don't reclaim just for the, in the future, if we were to try to get some of the materials. But it's a, it's a discussion that we could have.
Some has to sort of be prepared.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if they can expedite this now, in particular where there's some idle time out there on the loopers, they got idle time to just huddle around, you know, doing that. I know you got...
We can discuss it.
I've heard, yeah. Thank you, Nora, for your comments. Are there any more comments from the public?
Do you got anything back there?
Seeing none, is there a motion to close open public portion for this application? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, board comments from the members, please?
Seems pretty straightforward. We'll see you back in five years, I guess.
So we have a motion on the application, which is SP...
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Swade?
Yes.
Mayor Royal?
Yes.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes. Congratulations. Well, before you leave, I have a question. I've been on this board a few years. Somewhere's around three years ago, you appeared in front of the board, all addresses to James, for a floating solar array. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah.
I'd like to know what happened. Did you build it? Did you not build it?
So, and I'm intimately familiar with that as well. Um, we have all of our appropriate approvals, with the exception of the Board of Public Utilities. It's still there. Once we've received the BPU approvals, then we intend to continue construction.
So you intend to build it?
Yes.
Within Franklin's portion?
I don't remember the exact layout of it. I believe some of it is in within Franklin, a bit is in...
I mean, you came in front of this board asking us, so it must be in Franklin and not Monroe.
Yeah, it is. So this is another one. It's been tied up with the state, but our intention is...
So with Nora's question about the bank cutting down, would that interfere with the solar array?
It's, I don't think so. It's, it's not.
Well, I think you could do that Frank would, for it to get away.
They already came in front of the board and received all approvals?
I think it was the zoning board. No, it wasn't the planning.
Oh, wasn't it? The zoning? Oh, okay. All right, my bad.
So the floating is removable, but, um, you have to stake it down. So the intent would be to stake it down in Franklin Township and what, what Peter said is accurate at the moment.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. Okay, moving on with the meeting. Uh, I guess it's what, communications? No?
None.
None? Okay. All right, I lost the agenda. All right, is there any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 15th, 2025?
Make the motion.
Uh, is that an all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Jackie, is there a reason to go into closed session?
Yeah, I was thinking about you.
Yep.
No, no reason to close session?
Okay. Any closing comments from the board members? Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want a closing comment.
I have a comment. Chris is on the mic.
Yeah, there you go.